One. And welcome to the Silt Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. We'll get started if one. And welcome to the Silt Board of Trustees Candidate.
TV's just gonna throw everybody out because it's delayed off of what we're.
Okay.
Maybe the owl picked it up.
No, the owl shouldn't be even on.
We're getting some feedback.
So I think I accidentally have the YouTube stream.
Okay.
I'm not muted. Go ahead and try.
Okay. All right. We'll give this another shot. All right. Let's go ahead and get started. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My name is Erin Hunt and I am the Executive Director of the Colorado River Valley Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to host this forum tonight in partnership with the Town of Silt and our community members. Forums like this are an important opportunity for residents and business owners alike to hear directly from candidates about the issues shaping our community. Our goal this evening is to provide a respectful and informative space where candidates can share their vision and voters can better understand the perspectives and priorities of those running to serve on the Board of Trustees. Thank you for joining us and taking an active role in the future of Silt.
Well, good evening. I'm Ron Milhorne with the News Director at KMTS. I've been doing this for a long time, moderating a lot of forums, and I always count it an honor and a privilege to be able to do this and be called upon quite often. And it's, I don't take it for granted, so I, and I appreciate everyone being willing to run for office. It's a, it's a high calling. Let's go over quickly the, some of the ground rules. We'll start off with opening statements. It will be 90 seconds. I'm sorry, three minutes for an opening statement, three minutes for a closing statement at the end of our Q and A.
Oh, you were right. 90 seconds, minute and a half.
Three minutes for, oh, I'm sorry. I was right. I've been doing too many of these. 90 seconds for an opening and for a closing. Three minutes to answer questions. We'll have four questions. And we will go, we are starting in.
Justin.
With Justin Britnall. So, and we'll also have a time for a public comment or questions, either in person or if there's anyone listening online that would like to pose a question. All right. Let's go with opening statements and begin with Justin Britnall.
Hello. My name is Justin Britnall. I'm one of the candidates currently serving on the Board of Trustees. I had the honor and of serving the town in many ways. Started off in P and Z, a little what for a bit. I've been on the Board of Trustees. Other things that I do that are just involved with this Town of Silt or the community of Silt more is I've been on the Silt Heyday Committee for the last several years. Started off, I wanted to run a horseshoe tournament. Next thing you know, I'm now kind of involved in running the day-to-day of all of that. So it's been neat chat, neat to get involved and meet a lot of different people. Great event for the town every year. I was involved, I raised three children in this town. They've all since become adults now, so there's not much raising to do. But I was, during that time, I was able to get involved youth sports and see the importance of youth activities in the town and things to keep the kids busy, to keep them out of trouble, help them stay positive and do the great things that they're able to do and become great adults that can help continue to make this town their hometown. And then just involved with other things as far as with, one of the things I've done with the town was I was on the Parks and Rec Commission and we were able to get some horseshoe pits built here in town that, pretty good horseshoe communities looking at, they are sanctioned to pits that are able to hold state tournaments and things, the sanctioned tournaments from all over the state for people. So we wanted to do some of those tournaments as well.
Andrea Poston.
Hi. My name is Andrea Poston. I have served for the Town of Silt for a couple of years prior. And I got really involved during that time. And for personal reasons, I decided to step down. And the reason, it was interesting the way I was brought into the Town of Silt. Another candidate was having a meeting at one of my friend's house. And after we had some meaningful conversations, she suggested that I would run for office. And one seat opened up here in Silt and that person ended up sending me the little ad on the paper saying, "You should apply." So that's kind of how I was guided and directed to serve on the Board in the first place. And after serving for two years, stepping down, there was another moment that someone left the Board that I had a lot of admiration for. This person would ask a lot of great questions, awesome comments, and the person, for different reasons, moved away and left. I talked to my husband and said, "Should I, should I go again?" And he's like, "What, what your heart's telling you?" And I, I said, "Yes." So once again, I applied. I am being called to service. I'm being called to use my knowledge, my experience, the lessons that I've learned in my life, in business and in my personal life, to help people. I have a couple of kids and I wish that all kids all over the world have the opportunity of having an amazing life as well.
Alex Sanchez. 90 seconds.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Alex Sanchez. I live at 507 West Richards Ave in the Spruce Meadows subdivision, and I'm currently running for a Town Trustee. In my current work, I work as a Data and Operations Supervisor for Pittkin County. With over a decade of experience either at the state legislator or in county government, I believe my direct professional experience can be an asset in guiding the town. I oversee a budget of $14 million in revenue and $7 million in expenses. I've been able to decrease the expenses, not through downsizing, but through modernizing and technology within local government. I've built a network of partnerships within the region that I can use to leverage to address issues like growth, development, affordable housing, and economic development. Issues that I've heard from voters as I've gotten out into the community. I personally, I grew up here in Silt and I've seen how this town has changed. And I believe that Silt is at a pivotal crossroads for its future. I have no desire to be a career politician, but I felt it was my civic duty to step forward at this point in time and run for office. I invested in this community, which I love. My wife and I bought our first home here. I've been a P and Z member here. I had my first job here. And now I'd like to do my part in continuing to contribute to making this community as great as it can be.
Mr. Hanahan.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, for you, Ron, for emceeing the event and moderating it, to all of you listening, watching, or attending here in person, and to the other candidates who are willing to run and serve the community. This work is important and I appreciate your desire to help lead it. My name is Derek Hanahan. I've lived in Silt for almost 10 years, raised two kids, and been involved in working with the town in various capacities for almost six years. It's been a privilege to serve the town as your Mayor Pro Town. I'm asking for your votes so that we can continue to ensure that any changes in Silt happen in ways that benefit our community and continue to maintain a high quality of life in this wonderful little place we call home. My vision for Silt can be distilled down to one word, and that word is "we." "We" means having a community that is welcoming regardless of economics, age, culture, profession, beliefs. "We" means welcoming businesses that can become contributing members of our community. "We" means working with local and regional partners to enhance services and opportunities for all residents. And "we" means providing access to the resources you need as a citizen when you need them in ways that are both quick and easy. During tonight's forum, you'll learn more details about how I've helped work to drive economic development in Silt, initiating a housing and needs assessment that will help ensure that Silt continues to be an affordable place to live, engage with regional and local stateholders and state-level resources to build awareness of the issues impacting our community, support the town staff in providing the services you need. My sole interest is in continuing to lead this community forward for all our benefit. Again, it's about "we." Thank you.
Kim?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kim Engelhardt. I'm a current trustee here on the Board. I'm the newest trustee, but I've already been serving for over a year. And it has been my honor to be this involved with the town and to represent Silt with Colorado Municipal League, Garfield Clean Energy, some of the different organizations that I've been able to get involved with through my leadership role here. I was born in Garfield County. I've lived here most of my life with the exception of when I went away to college and then to law school. My work experience has given me the opportunity to practice law as well as be a mediator, which I really enjoy because it's solution-focused. And I work on cases where sometimes, and oftentimes, solutions seem impossible. And that's sort of my forte. I've also worked with and dealt with government agencies enough that I've really seen the value of things like partnerships and basic amenities for communities because it's really a better use of our resources. In my personal life, I have a daughter who's four years old. I'm raising her here in town with my husband and we love it here. I have a million hobbies and I just try to make the most of everything that Silt and the surrounding area has to offer. I love this place and I'm really enjoying serving the town.
First question, we'll begin with Andrea Poston. How should the town manage growth so that it supports businesses and housing while also protecting open space and community identity?
Well, it's important to continue to work on the master plan. The master plan is a document that, it's a living document that needs to be brought up to the Town Administration and revisited and presented to the Board from time to time because we need to be following those priorities of the citizens of the town. It's important to focus on infrastructure. It's also important to focus on quality of life, safety. And in order to maintain that level of service, we really need to have a secure, strong plan. So I would say having a master plan, it's, it's super important. And then it's also important for the Board altogether to work in a way that those voices, the representation, I should say, of those voices, of the people that we got voted from, are heard within our meetings that we are coming out here and we are speaking up when certain issues arises. So having that representation is also part of what we need to accomplish, that quality of life that the Silt residents deserve. Silt is a very beautiful, diverse town. And we love our diversity. My vision for Silt would be to have, you know, our pedestrian bridge, which that's the project that we are putting a lot of effort on right now because it can help save lives of people that are, you know, potentially crossing that. So we are working on that. That's a huge safety issue, but it's also going to bring quality of life into connecting both sides of the town. So master plan and working in conjunction with the Board to accomplish the goals for the Town of Silt.
And if, yeah, if you need the question repeated, I'm happy to do that. So, Mr. Sanchez, would you like the question repeated or?
No.
Okay. Three minutes.
Yeah. So I think growth is a major concern for many communities along the Colorado River Valley. As the affordable housing crisis in the Upper Valley communities become more and more prevalent, the Down Valley communities are really the ones that are facing a lot of the brunt of that burden. Also, as remote work becomes more of a factor in a lot of industries, that is also driving some housing costs. I think, well, a steady growth rate is beneficial. It can't go unfettered within any community. And so really setting up a system in which allows a steady growth rate so that continued growth and development happens, but limiting it to so much that it doesn't go, you know, essentially wild and change really the dynamic or makeup of a community is critically important. I also think where the growth happens is another key piece. Things like zoning or setting up certain districts where you want to see multifamily homes or different types of housing options are critical, but where the single-family homes can be placed, things like where you want to avoid in the downtown core is very helpful. That lends itself very well to business because if a business has somewhere where there is multifamily home, they know that there are going to be individuals that would be living there and accessing their services, which is more enticing to businesses to come in. I think a lot of local governments can do things that incentivize businesses to come into certain areas and providing different type of relief or incentives so that they do want to use Silt as a business hub. I also think that the Trade Center out near the post office is a untapped potential that Silt has. I know personally, a lot of construction companies or larger companies are leaving Glenwood, the Salt or any of the Up Valley communities because of the cost it is just to maintain some of those facilities. And I think that presents Silt as a really great opportunity to use that area as another way for businesses to come in. That provides some diversification in the type of business that's brought in here. I think diversification in business is critical, never becoming too reliant on any one industry because that could, in any type of economic downturn or market change, really be detrimental to the future of a town.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Not at all. How should the town manage growth so that it supports businesses and housing while also protecting open space and community identity?
I think the first word in your question is the most important, and it's an issue of how we're going to manage it, not if we're going to manage it, right? Because it's going to happen. You can't simply pretend it isn't or refuse to allow it to happen because the costs of living are increasing for all of us as residents. Every element or aspect of our lives, the costs are going up. And that happens to us as a community as well as individually. So how do we leverage business development? How do we leverage housing development to facilitate managing those costs, balanced with the quality of life that we all enjoy here as residents? The other aspect of it that's critical to know is there's no finish line. Growth doesn't stop. It may go down in certain years due to economic factors or other factors, but it never ends. So there's no finish line. We, as a Board of Trustees and the Mayor, need to figure out how to manage growth, not once, not per year, but constantly. It's an ongoing process. In terms of my own involvement in it, obviously being involved with the Chamber of Commerce and filling the Town's at-large seat there gives me a unique view into what the business community is wanting and needing, both existing and incoming. Being involved in the Strategic Planning Subcommittee and the Code Subcommittee helps me leverage the Housing Needs Assessment that I initiated last year to help drive the changes that we're going to make to our codes so that we can facilitate more affordable housing. There's also the question of density and mixed use, and I think that's vitally important. Giving a business a place that has residential above it so they can not just have a business downstairs, but facilitate a place to live for their employees upstairs. I think these are just some of the many factors that are going to drive growth in the community in the coming years.
Thank you. Growth in the Roaring Fork Valley, I think change can be difficult. But when it's inevitable, then we need to harness it to our benefit. And I think there are significant number of people who would love for the growth and the change and the development to just stop. But I don't see that happening. So I, I think that we need to find a way to make the best of it. And really, I mean, the question states the goal, which is to increase our amenities and give ourselves better opportunities as a town, but also to maintain the things that we like. And when people don't want the change, I think that that's, it's nice in a way because when you really love something, you don't want to see it change significantly so that it turns into something that you don't recognize anymore. So we want to maintain that integrity. And I think there are a lot of logistical and strategy concepts that we, we've got a really great team. And as long as everyone's committed to competency, I think that we can work those things out. I personally, as a Board Member, fully intend to look favorably upon developers and proponents of change who are going to give back to this community and are demonstrating that they want to contribute to our longevity and that they want to be a benefit and a long-term asset to our community and not a drain on our community. And so I, I want to be fair and impartial and unbiased as a Board Member that, but that is one thing that I want to reward and encourage as people try to bring change into our town, is that it, it, I want to be mindful that it will come back to us in a positive way rather than elbowing out our community.
Just repeat it one more time. Certainly. How should the town manage growth so that it supports businesses and housing while also protecting open space and community identity?
The other candidates have all made a lot of great points, things like the master plan. Because having that plan gives us a roadmap for where we're going to go to help us to manage the growth and to help us make good choices that are going to fit the community and the people that live here. There's things that are important to consider when we're doing all those. One of the things we did have to put almost, quite a moratorium, we had to stop allowing or approving new developments for a little while until we got our water plant situation situated. Because you have to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the capacity to take care of our citizens, not just the ones that we have now, but the ones for the future. Because as the town grows, growth can be seen as two things. Some people don't like to see the change in the growth because, well, I, I want it to be how it always has been. But there's also the excitement of being able to see the potential that Silt has be realized. There's potential for, as the other people have said, bringing some of the businesses that are being priced out of Valley, coming down Valley. Some of the people that work in for those businesses are already living down here, so it makes sense for them to relocate some of those things down close to where their workforces are. I've been lucky enough to work in town. I managed the Dollar General store when it first opened here in Silt. It's kind of was an interesting little thing because it's just a small little store and you think, wow. But the, the amount of sales tax and revenue and stuff that was able to contribute to the town's been amazing. It also provides a place for a couple people to work that live here in town. The benefit of not having to spend an hour of my day driving to work and then an hour of my day driving home from work, yeah, the wage may not have been as much as it would be up Valley, but your, your quality of life by not spending so much time away from your kids and being closer to the family and stuff is important. Zoning and the understanding some of that is something that I've greatly increased over my time working with the Town of Silt. When I first got involved, I didn't really understand what a lot of that kind of stuff was because that's not where I've been. But having that zoning, but the nice thing about it all is with the master plan, zoning and all these things, is they are all malleable. They're all things that can be managed and changed. But yet, they give us a guide so that we, we have roadmap of where you want to go. Because if you don't have a plan, then you're just going to have unfettered, it's just going to, we can get out of control. And you want to have some plans so we can have it be a measured growth versus just chaos.
Next question, we'll begin with Alex. What path do you see for alternative transportation such as bike paths, pedestrian safety improvements, or micro-transit in Silt?
Yeah. So first, I think RFTA is a huge organization within our area. I personally take public transit. And I think the level of service from Glenwood to Aspen farly greatly exceeds what we see from Glenwood to Rifle. And that's a real opportunity that I think the town can engage local municipalities in our area and our county commissioners in trying to improve that for our residents to get even just between municipalities, but then just connecting one end of Silt to the next. And so that's an opportunity where I think we can really leverage partnership with municipalities to try and improve that. I think a lot of people who live in this area like to have access to bikes, paths for walkability. And so those are things that I think that the town should continue to play an active role in. I think a pedestrian bridge that would connect this side of town to the south side is hugely important. Folks that live in the tiny home community or in the KOAs that are visiting, sometimes they don't want to have to drive over just to go to a restaurant or go to a park. On the flip side, residents in this side would love to be able to walk their dogs to that beautiful dog park that we have, but right, in order for safety, a lot of it requires driving. So I think that's a big piece. I also think maintaining a lot of the paths that we do have currently helps keep people in that mindset that they want to take advantage of it. I also think there's been other successful models that we can look at. In Glenwood and in Parachute, they're looking at a circulator or on-call kind of transit option where people can reach out to a service, they can come, and they can drive you to different parts of the community so you could do grocery shopping. I've personally seen folks in our senior home who have to walk to either the Dollar Store, you know, in both areas. And sometimes the traffic and the, you know, just the walkability of it is very dangerous. And so I think offering something like that can help them get access to the services they need in a safe way. But again, providing other options for our community.
Alternate transportation, public transportation, it's absolutely critical. We have somewhere in the vicinity of 400 housing units projected to be built here. We have a significant population increase. Each of those houses is likely going to have two cars. So I would disagree with the characterization of it being an alternate or an alternative. I think it's essential. And to that end, we need to continue to work with some of the existing tools for the middle mile, which is RFTA. There's no need to reinvent that wheel. RFTA exists. They're already providing a certain level of service through our community. We need to work with them to enhance that service. And that means more frequent routes during a larger portion of the day. Right now, there's currently, I believe it's a seven-hour window in the middle of the day where existing RFTA services don't service this community. That's a huge gap in availability. And we know this because during public comments in trustees' meetings, the public has come here and expressed the need for this transportation. And I've been talking with RFTA for, I think, going on four years now. There's some folks I know who work there as well as dealing with the Transportation Subcommittee more recently that was formed and attending those meetings about the urgency of getting this done. It goes back to the theme I mentioned earlier. It's about how we do it, not if we do it. We need to stop breaking it into a binary and focus on the how. I want RFTA to get more engaged in this community. I want to commit to that. The other piece of that is what we call the last mile, which is getting people to the park and ride to the bus stop. Other communities such as Parachute and Rifle are already working on that. I'd like to engage them and work with them to share some of the upfront as well as operational costs for facilities and vans and bring that service to Silt. And that's something I plan to do if re-elected.
Can you repeat that question?
Sure. What path do you see for alternative transportation such as bike paths, pedestrian safety improvements, or micro-transit in Silt?
Okay. Well, I agree with everything that's been said and I agree that walkability and public transportation is not an alternative. I think it's more of an essential. Just if you look at a comparison, neighboring towns, similarly situating towns, Silt has a lot of work to do when it comes to walkability and public transportation. I, I would like, I've, we've definitely heard outcry from numerous citizens about the fact that the public transportation system is not meeting their needs. I think we need more information. For example, I want to know how many people would utilize a express bus from Silt to Aspen and back every day? Or what do the population of our youth and students need? What about our elderly? What about the people on the south side of the highway? How do we make them not feel so stranded, right? So we've definitely got some issues there and I, but I think we need better information and better data so that we can know what the needs are so that we can meet them. And then obviously, the other piece is funding. If we do join RFTA, a lot of it's dependent on the voters and whether or not they're willing to approve a tax increase or not. Sometimes we have more grant money. Sometimes the budget is more dismal. And so I think our job- And so, I think our job is to work with what we've got and work for the voters. And so, what I've been trying to do is attend every regional event that I can where there will be different town managers, there will be people from Rafta, different stakeholders, and I go there and I speak out for Silt. And I say, you know, we're a really cool town and we have so much going on for us, but one thing that we need to improve is our walkability and our public transportation. We don't have a pedestrian bridge. And I'm just getting it out there because, again, the partnerships are so important, and it's not just our town that this affects. I mean, people are complaining about traffic on I-70. There, I mean, the traffic on Highway 82 is like legendary for how scary it is for people. So these are the kinds of problems that affect everyone. We have a huge workforce that's involved in that, and I want our youth to feel more connected. So I think for me, it's just about advocacy in every possible way that I can think of with whatever budget I have to work for, to work with in front of me.
Yeah, it's one of those, I mean, there's only so many different ways to say we need to have more bus routes. I ride the Rafta bus into, my wife works in Glenwood. One of the nice things is if I get home from work early enough, I'm lucky enough, I'm a remote worker, well, I'm a remote tech for Dish Network. So I start at home every day, drive their van wherever I go, but because of the way I work, there's times I'm as far as Grand Lake, up into that area, I go, I get to see a lot of the country, get to see a lot of ways that other communities are dealing with some of these issues. But what it comes down to is I get home and then I will take the bus into Glenwood and then drive with, drive my wife home, so we can get that little bit extra time to just communicate and talk. But it's using those buses, and you see people on them sometimes, sometimes there's not. And so, it's getting it out there and having, like as Trustee Little Heart said, getting some more data as far as when people would want to use it, what times the routes are for. But it's also a thing of, the reason why people don't use the bus is because there's not enough routes that it's available. Because you can't take the bus into Glenwood for an appointment at 11 o'clock, and then you don't want to be stranded in Glenwood until 4:30 when the next bus finally comes back this way. Or if you start work at 1:00 in the afternoon, 1:00 shift, you don't want to take the bus at 10:30 in the morning into Glenwood, find something to do for three hours before you finally go to work. So that's where working with Rafta, working with some of those things, and again, it doesn't make sense to, nor would it be fiscally responsible to try to build our own bus routes and our own bus system for Silt, because it just wouldn't be feasible. But part by partnering with the other communities, doing things like maybe getting a fleet of vans that are available that would be able to bounce back and forth, because from Rifle to Silt to Newcastle isn't a big difference. So depending on what their use times are and what the routes would be, call ahead, those things. I know that people that are using the one in Glenwood, the on-demand bus or the on-demand thing, you can call for the bus, they say it's on-demand, but you can call, and there may be an hour, hour and a half wait before they get to your house to take you. So you're still better off walking down to the bus stop, using the traditional method in some of those towns. So it's just continue to get as much information and community engagement from people to let us know what they would like, and then we can work on, once they let us know what they want, then we can figure out the how to make it happen.
Logistically speaking, we have assigned a line item amount for Rafta, or for transportation, I should say, for next year's budget. That hasn't been approved fully yet, but that has been already discussed with the board. Additionally, I do believe in the option of connecting with Rafta. There is a cost funding that would be associated with it. And prior to even offering and engaging with that, on the last Colorado Municipal League meeting, I had a conversation with one of the representatives from Rafta, and I was really very direct. I said, I asked him, what do we need to do? Do we need to make a plan from scratch? We need to resolve this as soon as possible. We, like it was mentioned, people have, you know, with disabilities, have walked into the room and told us their difficulties, like how they need to go to an appointment and they have to spend hours before they can come back, and that's heartbreaking, that's where, that's time of your life. Like, it's important and it needs to be addressed. And his answer was, we do have plans, we have, that's what they do. So we are working on setting up those meetings directly with the Rafta representatives through our town administrations. The conversation is already happening, and that's how I think we should move forward, getting the answer from who is already doing the work and connecting with other municipalities on alternatives that they have to complete that master plan. I'm talking about, you know, the connection within the town, but then again, getting more stops, because we don't also want to overtax the citizens. That's, again, another balance that we want to have, but if we do decide to go the Rafta route, we want to make sure that Silt gets what Silt needs.
Next question, we begin with Mr. Hanahan. What role should the Board of Trustees play in attracting new businesses and supporting existing ones, particularly when it comes to modernizing permitting and reducing barriers to doing business in Silt?
The board and the town and its governance provide an essential role primarily because it's the first step in the process, right? If somebody wants to open a business or make changes to an existing business, the town and its policies, and we as the Board of Trustees are the decision-makers regarding those policies, so I think we play an essential role. The question is also, how do we adapt to the changing business environment and continue to update our policies such that new businesses can come to town and succeed, but we're not alienating our existing businesses? So one example of this would be food trucks. We recently had a number of food trucks come into town over the past few years, and that was great, but we temporarily placed a moratorium on it because we realized that there was a risk to threatening some of our in-place restaurant businesses. And it was about going through that diligence process and making sure that we are balancing the needs of the incoming with the needs of the existing businesses here in town. I think that's one of the ways in which the town plays a central role in helping guide business. The other piece, or another piece, would be involvement with our friends at the Chamber of Commerce, and they are drivers with individual businesses. When someone wants to open a new business, if they're already here or they have a business and they want to come to town, the Chamber may be their first call. What's going on there? What's available there from a facility standpoint? What is the environment like? Can you give me any statistical data on the population? The Chamber serves a pivotal role in that regard, and that's why I've been involved with the Chamber in order to facilitate that business development, is to make sure that we, from a policy standpoint in the Town of Silt, as well as these third parties that we work with municipally, can ensure that businesses have the most up-to-date, applicable, relevant information to them to make a business decision, and also to drive more engagement. And a lot of it is also talking with local businesses. We, I'm sorry to point you out individually, we've had casual conversations about how are things going, how can we make things better? You know, for a lot of businesses, it's not just the status quo, it's about the changes they need within our community and our policies to help enhance our business. I think there's a balance between the businesses you want to bring to town that the residents need and want, and making sure we don't alienate the businesses and members of our community that are already here.
The word I was going to use was balance. I think that we don't want to be an entity that just drowns people in red tape and is so cumbersome to deal with that they're better off going to some other place, or we have a reputation like we're unreasonable. We also don't want to just open the floodgates and allow for the kind of development that sort of ruins our community, or we lose our charm and things like that. So, but it's kind of amazing the type of inhibiting presence that a town can be just by being there. I mean, just our open meetings law, we have to provide notice, and then there's a waiting period, and the business, the proponent of the business finds that process very tedious, but the idea is that everyone in the town has a full, fair opportunity to be heard and to have notice of what's going on in their town. So we just have to balance those different interests of making sure that everyone has a meaningful opportunity to participate in the process and that we're following the rules that are there for a reason, but that we're not so caught up in, you know, processes and shuffling paperwork that we're shooting ourselves in the foot as we're trying to grow our town. So it's just being a balance.
You repeat it.
Sure. What role should the Board of Trustees play in attracting new businesses and supporting existing ones, particularly when it comes to modernizing permitting and reducing barriers to doing business in Silt?
As they've mentioned, I mean, obviously, balance, Derek talked about supporting the existing businesses, and one of the best ways that you can, I think, encourage other businesses to come to town is by having successful businesses already. Because I personally, if I was opening a business and there's a town that doesn't have any successful businesses, it's tough to be the first. If you're going into a place that's already thriving, then you can be another piece to that puzzle to have more success for the community. I feel like the town employees, the town staff does a great job of communicating with our prospective businesses that are coming to town. Our relationship with the Chamber is becoming better and better as we go due to having representation there, in addition to the, just the Chamber's gone through some growth recently as well, which is going to help the area tremendously. And then a lot of it is, is just, but again, it's about support for existing businesses and then bringing in the new businesses. And then the nice thing about that is, is that it's giving people that live in this town also places to work, gives teenage kids their first job that's here in town that they aren't having to take and worry about the transportation issue to get somewhere because the jobs are here. That's one of the ways that we can also, with alternative transportation, well, if we can bring businesses to town that are, can provide jobs, then people could ride a bike to work versus having to drive up 82, or at this point, 72, Glenwood, through Glenwood, and then all those, that stuff. That's the one disadvantage of my job is I do a lot of driving, and so you see all of the, I mean, any accident along the way, and it adds hours and hours and hours to somebody's day. And by reducing the travel time, it also allows businesses to be here where the, where the community is. And so, by being inviting, but yet also is important that we also manage the growth and we have those things in place to allow for it to be the correct, the correct growth and not just having, because you don't want to have seven pizza places in one town. You don't want to have all the other things. And so, by having the mix, it allows for everybody to succeed.
On a higher level, I believe the Board of Trustees has a really big responsibility in taking care of the infrastructure, once again, that has the water to sustain those businesses, that we have the amenities that people, that the businesses that the people attract, that they can use those amenities. I don't believe we should over-control the market. I don't believe it is the, you know, the board's role to control the free market, but I do believe that we as a board have the responsibility to protect the interest of the people of Silt. And if we have communication and people on those public comments coming in and letting us know that those are not businesses wished to have in town, we really do need to be listened, because that's who we are representing. So higher level, definitely making sure that our roads are good, our parks are good, we are offering great clean water, and yeah, and hiring the right people for town administration. That's another role too, like having strong people within the administration, community development personnel, and understanding that as board members, we are leaders, not micromanagers. We hire a town manager to manage, and we need to give, you know, them the support they need so that they can go out and make things happen. So really, I try to be on the board body when making those decisions regarding business, not me on my own, listening to the population, using each other's feedback, but operating from a higher, higher level.
I think the Town of Trustees should be a champion of economic development within the town, both as a body as a whole and individuals within this board. I think they should take an active role in engaging local industries and business leaders and trying to bring them here. I think they should also work with existing businesses to ensure that those businesses have what they need to continue to thrive and be successful. I think there's a lot of instruments or tools available at the town for any business that is looking to relocate here, or there were tools that were put in place or utilized during COVID to continue to ensure that those businesses that were here thrived. And so, there are some successful models you can continue to utilize and lean on. When it comes time to modernizing the permit process, as I spoke to earlier, it's something I have a little familiarity with, and digitizing the permitting process within my organization. I know our community development department here has gone to a digital permitting, and the benefits of those are really being able to streamline the process, spend less time on administrative barriers around gathering applications, preparing documents, things like that, and more so on the businesses trying to pitch what they are hoping to do and move that pitch from an idea into implementation. And so, I think continuing to lean into digital and modern process are another great opportunity for the town to be a business-friendly community and to entice more future businesses and continue to sustain the current ones we have.
Final question. We'll begin with Kim. How do you plan to work with developers and residents to address housing needs while respecting neighborhood concerns?
Thank you. I think a lot of people dislike the term affordable housing because they equate it with government-mandated housing or cheap builds that are denigrating to the community, and first of all, I don't support any of those things. And I think it can be done in a way that's aesthetically pleasing, and we're learning a lot about that right now. I think the extreme that causes us as public officials to get involved is when we have perpetual off-balance or a shortage of housing that is affordable for people, to the extent that we end up with problems like labor shortages, or significant portions of the population who are transient and have very little ties to the community, or significant portions of the population who are experiencing a lot of instability and may be not getting their basic needs met, and they're therefore more likely to commit crimes. And those are all scenarios where I feel like we suffer as a community and as a society. So it's not about mandating or pointing people in the direction that we want for them to build, it's about having guardrails in place to avoid those extremes that can then become an issue of public safety. And I actually have a couple of notes about the benefits of a more balanced housing market, because I do feel like our community is very off-balance, and we're sort of used to having this housing struggle that we've always had where people can't afford to live here, but when you have a more balanced landscape, studies show just some of the benefits are improved public health, reduced crime rates, stronger social networks, which lead to an increase in community resilience, a more stable workforce, and better access to essential workers, because the essential workers can actually afford to live where they work. So again, I'm not in favor of micromanaging the free market, it's just more about avoiding those extremes that lead to issues with public safety. So, but I think we can meet those goals, and I think we can do it in a way that's beautiful and that doesn't- and that doesn't intrude on, um, the wishes of the community and the free market as well.
Yeah, um, the affordable housing, the housing, the biggest thing, we did a housing need assessment. And we found that a large percentage of people live where we're, they spend, uh, the, the balance of where your funds should go with your housing, your food, this, that and the other. It's kind of like a business. You're, if you're running your restaurant, you have your food costs, then you have this, you have this, you have those different parts. Well, the housing percentage is out of balance for a lot of people. Um, that then we have situations in where you have multiple families living in one home to allow for people to be able to afford to live there. Well, then that would allow, runs into situations where you have townhouses that are for three bedrooms. You have three couples living there. So now you have six cars parking where they thought they needed space for two. So it's really working with the developers to make sure that we're doing smart developments. Um, the things that we can, by increasing the inventory of housing available, then the, the market will bring the price down some. Um, it's not going to go down a whole lot because once prices go up, prices don't necessarily, oh, it's, there, there's, can be promises of prices going down, but it, it just doesn't happen. I mean, it's, it's been something that you can see from, I mean, it's, I don't understand how gas in Silt is $3.69 a gallon, but in Eagle, it's $3.30 a gallon. That doesn't make sense to me. But that's nothing that, so it's just figuring these things out, working with developers to do, to put in smart developments, putting guard, uh, not guardrails, but guidance to them of this is what we'd like to see. Mixing it with single family, multifamily, and then that allows for good neighborhoods and the mix of, uh, the diversity that the community is going to need. Um, by having more housing in the area, then you're going to bring businesses, attract businesses. And so it's kind of a, there's the whole chicken and the egg thing. There's, none of these things are independent of each other. Almost everything that we've talked about tonight affects the other pieces together. It's all working concert together. It's kind of like an orchestra or a band. It's not just the brass section. It's not just the strings. It's not just the percussions. They all have to work together to make beautiful music, just like we have to work together to have a beautiful community.
Um, I had the opportunity to listen to Governor Polis at an event, uh, recently, uh, at the annual Colorado Municipal League Conference. Kim and I attended that. And there is a huge push for affordable housing currently and I believe it's Prop 1, 2, 3, uh, yep. And in order to access funds from that proposition, we do need to have a plan. And there are a lot of different ways that you can plan for affordable housing. You can have partnerships. You can, uh, work with the developer as well. Um, and have agreements that safeguard, uh, the community, but also leverages what's available as far as fun, funds out there. Um, we have recently revived our urban, uh, housing authority. And I'm hoping to really go back to it and engage in those conversations to start formulating the plans of what affordable housing would like, would look like, uh, for Silt. Because this is an important discussion and the state's not telling us how we should do it. We can explore some of the options that have done in other towns. I know Aspen has, uh, set sections for, uh, affordable housing. And once we have those plans in place, uh, we can move forward with, um, either, um, analyzing, um, investor plans that come, come into town or going in and checking in those, uh, pockets for funds and looking up who we can have partnership, maybe Habitat for Humanity or different entities in order to go ahead and proceed moving forward. So that's where I believe we are at now and that's how I believe we can move within, uh, the next step into the direction for creating affordable housing for Silt.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. How do you plan to work with developers and residents to address housing needs while respecting neighborhood concerns?
Um, so I think on the developer side, they want clear and concise requirements. Um, ever-changing requirements are difficult for them to adjust, especially when they're thinking, uh, multiple years out. So really being able to communicate that to developers so they can understand what's required in the process and what's going to be required of them to come. I think for residents, they want the community that they live in to be enhanced, but not to be changed or altered in such a way that it, you know, is no longer what they were originally buying into. Um, I think the developers and the town should receive a, should have a mutually beneficial process in which both are, uh, receiving something for them. Um, developers receiving, you know, an agreement to be able to bring a new development to light. And then the town utilizing tools and things available so that they can benefit as well. Um, I think there are, you know, we can continue to leverage private, public and nonprofit partnerships. Things like, uh, what the town has done with Habitat for Humanity is excellent. Um, there's also the Regional Housing Coalition that's coming online, which is another opportunity that the town can partner and try and continue to bring, uh, thoughtful development into the town in a way that's affordable, but that doesn't change the character. Um, I think in looking at the land use and building codes, there are definitely tools that are available in other communities that currently aren't utilized here. Um, things like impact fees coupled with thoughtful development are a way that a developer can get a green light on building somewhere. And the town can, uh, essentially create a funding source for either affordable housing, road maintenance, infrastructure. So those are an opportunity where the town can still promote development, um, while creating a funding source to address some of the other issues that we might be facing. Um, and at the end of the day, I think what we want to see is that whatever development happens is for the greatest benefit of the community and the developers and residents alike.
A quick question for the audience, if you live in Silt, who here wants a triple decker apartment complex right next to your house? For the record, no hands went up. And that speaks to the core aspect of this question, which is balancing, right? Balancing growth with existing residents. Balancing developer desire, justifiable desire to make a profit and making sure that we are building not just the housing itself, but all the infrastructure around it, which we talked about earlier. And building all of these systems in a balanced, sustainable way so that the decisions we're making now with developers will satisfy the needs of the people who live in those houses for not just the next year, not just for the next election cycle, but for the next quarter to a half a century. Right? We have some homes in our community that are very, very old, probably older than anybody in this room, I dare say. And I'm probably one of the oldest ones in the room, so I can say that. Um, there's a couple of pieces or phases to this process, right? So some of the other candidates have talked about the housing needs assessment. That happened already. We've now got that data and that feeds into some of the next steps in the process, which are ongoing code revisions and changes. And I'm directly involved with that through the code subcommittee. Beyond that, we're also looking at zoning changes and some of those are incidental. When a developer comes in with a specific project, we look at revising or updating the zoning for that space so that it can be put to its best use for balance between community need and developer want. One unique example of that is the, uh, Western Slope Veterans Coalition, um, came to us last year with a housing development opportunity for veterans housing. We had to turn it down because of the space it was in and some of the issues it created with access and egress for emergency services. They worked with a local church here in the community, came up with a better plot, easily passed through. We, we can adjust our goals to align with developer need and want as well as community need and want. We're getting back to this thematic word, which is balance. It's not about whether or not we should do things, it's how we do them in a state of balance. The other pieces, uh, and some of the other candidates mentioned them, public-private partnerships. So working with emergency services, Colorado River Fire and Rescue, local police, Garfield County, um, Grand Valley Hospital. I'm sorry, Grand River Hospital as examples of public or service-based groups that we should be working with to drive affordable housing. And whether that's through Habitat for Humanity, the Regional Housing Coalition or other groups, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all solution. And I'm already talking with our town manager about some big, um, developments that are going on that we want to potentially turn into affordable housing complexes. So that those public agencies and partners can have affordable housing for their staff.
That concludes the questions and now we have, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Uh, we can open it up for public, uh, comments or questions for the next 10 or 12 minutes or so. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to pose a question, step up to the podium or if there's anybody online.
Hello. I had a question about the RAFDA. So I'm so sorry, Mr. Hun-
Just Derek is-
Okay, Derek.
That's what most people go with.
Okay. Um, you were mentioning how you've been working with RAFDA for the last four years in order to get them to have more routes into Silt. So I was wondering, what is it actually like realistic timeline to get them to actually start getting more routes, not only through Silt, but like through rifle and maybe even parachute? Cause I, well, I don't even know if RAFDA is a publicly owned, uh, service or if it's private. And I know it's different depending on what you're working with and people and companies aren't always the easiest to convince to get you to help people out with those kinds of things. That's my question.
Sure. So the first step is we have to join RAFDA.
Okay. So not part of RAFDA.
We're not currently part of RAFDA and the, the budget allocation that trustee Poston was referring to earlier is, is scheduled for next year so that we can join RAFDA. And then they will be able to start gauging our usage of the current service that they provide. We'll also be able to participate by getting, uh, a seat on their board in the decisions that drive the strategy for RAFDA across Western Garfield County going forward. What's the expression? Decisions are made by the people in the room. So we need to get in the room by putting money in and committing to being a user of RAFDA systems. Once we do that, then we can start influencing the decisions and the outcomes that they're making operationally as well as strategically. So I apologize, I can't provide you an answer that says it'll be done in 15 months, but I hope I've at least laid out some of the steps going forward.
So even if it was something that was to be like approved by citizens, it would still be something that wouldn't be like, take a couple of years to actually get everything situated.
It will. And, and that's separate from what I called the last mile solution earlier, which has already been implemented in parachute and rifle and, and other communities in the Roaring Fork Valley, um, Glenwood Springs with their on-demand. That is a, a separate engagement, but one that we can do in parallel with what we're doing with RAFDA. So that we can try and improve both the middle mile and last mile solutions at the same time. They don't need to be mutually exclusive.
Okay. So for everyone that's here, since I'm new to Silt, what can the citizens actually use right now as public transportation? Because this seems to be something that is an ongoing issue.
Currently, as far as public transportation getting out of Silt, it's pretty much boils down to RAFDA. Um, there is the, they have currently, uh, stops in the morning and then stops in the afternoon. And then there's a big dead time in the middle of the day. Um, some of that dead time is because we currently are not members of RAFDA as far as on that. Um, neither is rifle. Neither, Newcastle is their last member. Newcastle has more stops than we do. They run through, they run through the whole day. But the, it stops in Newcastle and you have to get from Newcastle to Silt on your own or vice versa. Um, part of joining RAFDA though is not just the town putting in money, but it is something that goes to the voters. The voters have to vote to be a part of RAFDA because it's a tax increase for, to be a full, full member of RAFDA. Um, so it does make it a challenge because you have a large part of the community that says, well, I'm not going to use it, so why do I want to have it? But I would challenge people that even if you yourself aren't using it, it will help your kids be able to have, um, transportation to get to and from places. Even if they're just taking it from Silt to rifle or rifle to go to the pool for the day. Um, or taking the bus into Glenwood to go to the pool for the day or to get into Glenwood then to get up to the ski areas. There's all those different things.
Yeah. It's also just fun to take the bus.
Yeah, you know what? Getting on the bus is, it can be relaxing. Just sit back and relax and let someone else drive.
Yeah.
So I think just something else, kind of, you know, expanding on that topic. Silt as itself joining and being one voice, you know, brings some weight to it, but not as much as it could if we had a more of a regional partnership with communities like rifle, Newcastle and the Garfield County Commissioners. Um, I think the Upper Valley communities do a great job in advocating as a collective. And that is why you can see that they don't have charged fares for anybody from Snowmass to Aspen. You can ride that service free in that area and even getting from Basaltup Valley, it's a very low minimal cost. Um, because they have gotten together and they've been really able to advocate and work on that. And so I think that's a huge opportunity for a lot of these communities in this area is to get together and get a collective voice. Um, because it would just carry a little bit more weight, um, especially when you have such an established collective that is up there. Um, so joining in itself is powerful, but it could be more powerful if we brought more people with us. And we definitely know that the desire and demand is down in these communities to utilize those services, especially those services as far up as Aspen. Um, right now they've implemented a fare-free transportation, uh, for the month of October, November. And I just, as somebody who rides it, can only imagine what a benefit that is to those members that live down in rifles, Silt or Newcastle who take that transit, who don't have to have that daily cost to their budget. And so that's something as, you know, joining this and hoping to be a part of that conversation, really wanting to advocate for those individuals that for whatever reason their business has to be up there, they're able to provide, you know, services for their family. You know, make an honest living. Um, they're not afforded sometimes the opportunity to drive or other options. So I think really trying to push for that, um, can be very powerful for a lot of our residents.
Yeah.
Also, um, joining RAFDA can entail us as a town allocating a certain percentage of our tax revenue to them. So we give 2% for, I, but that number can change and that, some of those terms are up for negotiation. So I think it's important that we negotiate for our town to have good terms with RAFDA if we're going to engage in that agreement with them. So that's some of my hesitancy in not just pushing for that so quickly because I feel like there are some stakeholders in our region that don't want to contribute as much as I think they should. And so I'm just, I'm just trying to get, think about the best way to get us affiliated with RAFDA with optimal terms. Um, so that's something to think about there because there, every, it's a, um, supply and demand kind of a thing where you can negotiate those things. The other thing I wanted to just mention to you for your information is that there are things like Medicaid taxis. So if people have medical appointments and things like that that they need to get to, there are taxi services that people utilize around this region to get to and from places like that. Um, and then the, he was talking about the last mile solution and that's, that's the idea that like, if our bus stop's landscape is poor, we have services that fill those gaps. Like a taxi service that helps our elderly citizens go from their house to the bus stop so they don't have to walk four miles or whatever. So it's those, it's like gap filler services in the meantime where when we don't have everything set up with RAFDA and that large entity that can give us so much, like a bus with wifi that'll take you all the way to Aspen. In the meantime, we have those smaller things that we can try and do for our people to fill those gaps. So the more that we hear from you guys about those things, um, that can be really helpful for us to give, give the people what they need.
Okay. I was going to ask if anyone has any questions because I'm going to keep asking. Just wanted to make, just open it up. Um, so if there isn't a good public transport, other than that, what other options do your citizens have? Like just walking, biking?
We're like, I feel like we're in a crisis. I mean, that's, that's maybe a overly dramatic word, but like, we, we don't have any options other than just driving everywhere. And so then everyone wants to complain about the traffic and how horrible it is and the, the, the growing pains that we're experiencing. But we're all kind of guilty of it, but we don't, I mean, we don't feel like we have much of an option because I've heard from people. You try and take the bus to one appointment, your whole day is shot.
Yeah.
Right? So people get in the car and they drive. And so it's, unfortunately, we're, we are aware that we- And so it's, unfortunately, we're, we are aware that we have some severe limitations in that regard. And so it's just something that we're trying to work on. And we've got a lot of growth that we're trying to keep up with.
Yeah.
So one thing that we could do is, I mean, there's not a lot of options, but one of the options too is, as Candace Sanchez mentioned with having the free month this month and next month, it's kind of great there. The other day I went to get on there and I almost bought, paid for my daily fare to go to Glenwood. And I was like, oh wait, I don't have to do that today. And so it is nice. But also during this time is, if people can use it as much as possible, it's not costing you anything, and it's going to let RAFDA know that there is people available that do want to ride it, that there is that ridership available. We are facing challenges though with RAFDA because it's a private business. Some people feel like that they make too much money because they spend too much money on Bus Barns and all these other things. And the Garfield County Commissioners have been in this room and told us that they're challenged because they only have so much money with their budget, and they may or may not be able to support them as much as they have been in the past. So it's working together as a collective. Yeah, bus fares up in Aspen, the Snowmass and stuff are free, but some of that is because there's, I'm guessing that there's a higher contributions they give to RAFDA up in those areas that they've done that allows, that they've put the money, they put the money where the mouth, they put their money where their mouth was and got it. Whereas Silt doesn't have that availability of funds in our budget to fund RAFDA. Whereas, I'm not sure what Eagle County, the Eagle County Commissioners, Peking County Commissioners, how much they're giving to that, to those, that's allowing those areas to have the reduced costs. So there is just a lot of challenges, and it is. But as we stated, with, just like with a lot of other challenges that our area faces, by working together with our neighboring communities, we're going to find solutions that are going to be the best for everyone available. It's like with what he did, the water plant. We looked at possibly working with rifle, with their plant that they've already built. We looked at some other options. We found that the best option for Silt at this time was to build a new plant for us. And those are the kind of challenges and choices that the trustees have to make, along with our, our town employees that we, that we select and that our town manager then gets to find people that are in the rights roles that are able to do the best job as they can.
So I think, you know, given where public transit and the service level is now, it does require looking at other potential innovative solutions. Towns like Carbondale or in the Elgabel area, they have a WeCycle program in which you can download an app and bike around with bicycles that are set in different parts of the area. The first 30 minutes are free, and then after that they have a charge for, I believe, a couple of minutes. But in 30 minutes, you can travel, you know, a good distance, especially in a town like Silt. So I think those are opportunities for us to look at, what are other transit solutions that might not be just public transit? And see if we can engage with companies like that to see if Silt is a good fit. You know, I can imagine a bunch of WeCycle stations around town in which people could check and check out bikes and be able to go down to the dollar store, grab some food, bike up. Because I know, depending on where you live, sometimes space is an issue, right? Being able to store a bike, being, having to maintain it, different things like that. And so this would be a public benefit of another solution that we can have. And luckily, the weather around here is great a lot of the year. And so while they get, you know, housed in the winter up valley, that usage can really be, you know, near year-round in a community like ours. So I think those are some other opportunities we could continue to try and explore to bring a diverse transportation option. Now, that obviously doesn't connect us to rifle, Newcastle, or other communities, but that last mile as was discussed, could be a solution for that, or a tool of a solution.
Well, I could think that's a good idea, because other cities do that. And Silt is small enough where, like, I could walk to the library, but it's much, it's going to be a big part of my day just to be like, okay, I'm going to walk there instead of taking a car there. Completely different question. I think Kim, you had mentioned that you can talk to, I guess, like your representatives, but how exactly do the people do that? Like if someone has a complaint, or like, or even just like a comment, or they're like, "Hey, I want to bring something up, but it's like not an emergency, it's like I just want to talk to this, like about this." It's also open to everyone else.
Yeah, so, and we, we have open meetings laws. So, you know, there's a lot of, transparency is important. And so we don't want, you know, people being persuaded by outside comments and things like that. So we like to have discussions in the meeting, in the chambers like this, on record. But people can reach out to the staff. You can, I mean, we have email. You can reach out to the clerks, you can call us, you can contact and say, you know, "Here's my issue, I'm wondering how to address this." We also have public comment where, so every time we have a board of trustees meeting, which if you're not on the, the listserv or whatever for the town of Silt, you should sign up for that because you'll get emails informing you about the date of the next board of trustees meeting. It attaches an agenda, a copy of the agenda. So then you'll see the next time we're going to be addressing anything about public transportation, anything about, anything that's of interest of you. You can watch it on Zoom, you can show up, you can, every issue that we address, we then open it up for public comment for each issue. So if you want to talk about an issue on the agenda, we make space for that. Because that's what open government is all about. And then at the end, we also have public comment for any non-agenda items. So sometimes we have people come in and transportation wasn't even on the agenda, and they just swing by to let us know that like, Silt needs help with the transportation issues and they're not happy about it. And we appreciate the feedback and we appreciate the information. So there's different ways to go about it. Some people don't want to provide public comment, they'd rather go talk to the clerk first, or, you know, see what they can get figured out. But we're here to help, not only support our staff, but if, you know, if people don't like what the staff has to say and they want to talk to us directly, that's, you know, that's part of why the public comment part is there too.
So how do you sign up for the thing that you said?
I think you're just going to have to ask the staff maybe outside of this meeting, or outside of this, this forum, and, and get linked up with that. But we have a really great, friendly staff here who are happy to help with all kinds of stuff like that. So.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways you can get information from the town. One, of course, is the billboard that's out front as you come into town. There's also a text my gov you can sign up for. That's great in that they send out text messages about road closures, if there's, if there's a water line break, anything that was happening that might be impacting the citizens, they try to send it out and let us know. You also get reminders about the concerts and the fun stuff. So it's not just bad news, you get good news too. And then as, and as far as for signing up for the email, you might also, I'm not sure that it's on the website or not. Sometimes the website can be a little funky when you get on there. But if you can get in there, you can find the, there might be a place to sign up for the email chain there. Or obviously, if you come into town hall, Monday through Thursday from seven in the morning until, Jim, is it six? Monday through Thursday?
Five thirty.
Five thirty? See, I didn't want to cut it long. Five thirty.
Closed on Fridays.
People are here every day. And the nice thing about the seven o'clock in the morning has worked out good for me because of my job, I travel, I'm on the road. But I don't start, I don't clock in till seven fifteen, so there are days where I'll be here at seven o'clock when they open, say hello, take care of some business, still get home, clock in and do I need to do. So it's kind of nice to have that fluctuating time.
And I think a credit to the town is that they hold their meetings Monday, Monday night at 6:00 PM, which is very accessible to most people. I know that there are some municipalities that might hold it during the day, say around 10, 10:00 AM when people are working, dealing with other matters. And so that's not always the most accessible to get to your elected officials, especially as a body as a whole. And so that's a really credit to the town. I think the other thing for trustees is being out in the community. I actually met Derek at the dog park a couple of months back this summer, and that's where he started to recommend P&amp;Z and getting involved. And so I think that's a great opportunity to meet, you know, your elected officials. It's just out in the community and having them always be accessible and willing to talk, because that's somewhat what comes with, you know, part of the gig is meeting people at the dollar store, at the gas station, and willing to talk with their issues. And so just understanding that that's always available, I think.
Do I have time for one more question?
Oh.
I have just one question.
Yeah.
You sparked, you've sparked a question. Because the topics of housing and transportation are so big, I just wanted to know, like, what kind of discussion or open discussion do you have with other communities, other committees that are in different towns? Because I don't feel like it's just Silt's issue. Do you know what I mean? Because you talk heavily about how our employment is going up valley and down valley. So it's like, this is all collectively our problem, you know? And so I just, I just wonder sometimes, like if Aspen does think about Silt and the people that live here that travel all the way up there to also provide, you know, they work up there, they benefit their community. And just as a business owner in Glenwood, I know how hard it is to find employment. And you want your people to stay around because you need to obviously be able to service people around you, so it impacts all of us. So that was one of my questions is like, how much discussion is there with other committees and other towns? And is that a thing that's going on with?
I think we're pursuing that aggressively, if not desperately, and are, all in our own ways, sort of. I mean, so for example, I, I've been able to join Garfield Clean Energy as the Silt representative, and so they were talking about, are there worthy projects to fund? And I'm saying, you know, the Silt pedestrian, the Silt transportation issue isn't just a Silt issue, it's an everybody issue, you know? And so, and I'm, I'm saying that to a roomful of people, including a RAFDA regional representative, people from all of the different towns, you know, all around. Your kids come hang out here too, right? These are the kinds of things that I'm trying to put across to people myself. And, and we have, I think, we've all sort of shared the acknowledgement that partnerships, you know, that's a very like vague word, but when you start working in this arena, partnerships means like, we cannot do things alone. Like we, there are some, there are some issues that are Silt-specific, and there are some issues that are valley-wide. And when something is a regional issue, we need to partner up regionally and figure out how to attack those issues like that. And I feel like we have, you know, the, when you live in a rural community like this and you can see all those outside resources, they're right there. So if you're not willing to do that, then you're missing out. So I think we're, we're trying. It's, but it's, some of this stuff, it just takes a long time, and that part's really frustrating because, you know, you don't see the process and it feels like, what is, what are people even doing? But, so I think that's part of it too.
My tactic is persistence. So I, I, full disclosure, I have three friends who work for RAFDA. I've asked town staff to potentially blockade the CEO of RAFDA's driveway so that he would have to come and see us. Kidding aside, I think there are numerous events, formal and informal. We have a mayor's meeting coming up in a week or two. So mayors and mayor pro temps from all of the communities in Western Garfield County will be sitting down with some of the Garfield County Commissioners. This is going to come up during that meeting when we're talking about these issues. It comes up at CML events, it comes up sometimes in chamber meetings. I'm involved with the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Partnership. I did not make up that acronym. CRV EDP, it comes up in those as well. It comes up anecdotally at Dog Parks, it comes up at Brew Zone, or, or any other establishment here. It comes up in casual conversations with residents. I can think of Bob over at the Senior Housing Complex who's talked about it. I can talk to parents who've brought it up when I've been at the library. I'm pointing at them because they're here in the room. Luis, you and I have talked about it, transportation, how it relates to local businesses. It comes up anecdotally, but it gets back to the word persistence. Keep plugging away, to keep talking about it, keep bringing it up regardless of the forum, and they can't ignore us forever.
And we give direction too, to the town employees to make that outreach as well on behalf of, of the board. And yeah, we utilize our resources too. So, and I believe that that's the more, that I love the work that we do, the connections that we make. CML events are a great example of that. We got to go to quarterly, is it quarterly meetings? Do they do that annual meetings, I should say? And connect with representatives from the Western Slope and talk about Silt and talk about some of the challenges. And we have that one-on-one connection. And yeah, and just being out there, participating, continue to have the conversations and then engaging the town administration to, to make that reach. That's more of the effective way that we, we do it.
Yeah, so there's even been times in the past where we've had joint meetings with Silt's board of trustees and Newcastle's leadership, talking about some of the community stuff. That was, some of that stuff was more, on those, that time it was more about recreation and some of those things. Because again, it's, the more we can work together, I mean, we're close, we're, we're not, we're not next door, but we're really pretty darn close. So sharing resources on some things, like there's been things in the past where there's a piece of equipment that one of the towns need that everybody could use at different times, than possibly going together and purchasing that equipment versus taking in, having to lease it from someone else. Challenges with that though, of course, are, well, if one person, one community breaks it, then what happens with that? So there are some things, partnerships got to be taken care of, but we work on it. It is something that is ongoing, but it's, the biggest challenge or some, one of the most frustrating things about being involved in, in the town government has been how slow some things need to, how slow some things need to move. Because there's things like with the pedestrian bridge. You spend more time and money, it seems like, with all of the engineering and the planning and the talking to the railroad, you have to talk to the, to CDOT, you have to deal with this company and that company. And by the time, it's like you spend more money, more time and energy doing all the planning than you do actually the building. But without doing all the planning, you don't get to do the building. So it's kind of one of those things, it's just necessary parts of it. And navigating those parts is the challenge.
On the positive side, we are at 30% completion as far as they, they, how much? Fifty? Sixty?
And I, and I know I already, I know I already spoke, but I wanted to give a shout out too, like, perfect example is Ms. Hunt's here with the Colorado River Valley Chamber of Commerce, right? So Silt doesn't have a chamber. We have, we joined the Colorado River Valley Chamber of Commerce to, you know, join forces with other people. And that's just an example of an organization that was created by smart people who were like, saw the need and we, we did it in a collaborative fashion and something, you know, and law enforcement's the same way. When people, when towns need backup, the surrounding towns help each other. You know, there's that reciprocity there. So just a couple more examples that I was thinking of where, you know, we, we work with what we have and then we build off of our strengths.
And that was going to be something I was going to touch on. I think there's a real acknowledgement for up valley communities, but surrounding communities that we really can't do this alone. You know, there have been organizations like RAFDA that have, you know, regionally looked at transportation, but now there's the Regional Housing Coalition that's looking at housing solutions up and down the valley. There's chambers, there's a lot of organizations that are being stood up at this time that aren't just focused on their one area, but really seeing how can we bring community together and build coalitions that can allow us to move further. So I think that is a positive sign. It was, I think, really a result of COVID and how a lot of communities realize that they have a heightened problem that they need to address with limited resources. And so it kind of created, forced people to have creative solutions to these. And that's where I think you're seeing a lot of these partnerships renewed and a lot of new ones being created. And there's definitely an acknowledgement of valley communities that they're never going to build enough roads and they're never going to build enough housing. So how can they partner with down valley communities to try and share that workforce or share resources?
Yeah. I hope there's some good improvement to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the citizen input. Appreciate the questions and the discussion. We'll go now to closing comments, and we'll begin with Justin Britnell.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone that came into the room today, anybody that's watching this. And then my fellow candidates for taking the time and the effort to do this. I was, started off doing the board of trustees and I was on the P&amp;Z, and my oldest daughter was in high school. She was writing her college scholarship essays. And when I realized, when I knew that I'd made an impact, was when she wrote, one of her essays was about the importance of your local elections and local government, town government. And how that some people may have the misconception that the biggest elections that we worry about are our presidential elections and our, the government, the national elections. When, when impacting your day-to-day life, your local elections and your local government's the most important. And so that's one of the things that's driven me to continue to stay involved, is that I want to be a part of helping the town reach its potential. And to continue to serve a community that I've watched grow. And it's kind of, my role has changed a little bit. I started off as the dad of the kids that were in the school. Well, now I'm seeing kids that I coached soccer that are living in the community, they're now having their own kids. And providing a place and services for the- And providing a place and services for those kids now. So it's impacting now another whole generation almost. So it's kind of, it's a, it's a, it's, um, encouraging. It's a little daunting and that makes me realize that, yeah, I'm not as young as I used to be unfortunately. But, um, it's having that impact and being able to continue to do it and have the relationships with people.
Okay. Um, thank you so much for coming over, uh, to this meeting today. It is, uh, really good to have, uh, you guys here. And I would like to encourage everyone to continue to come up and show up and express your thoughts. It's really sincerely welcomed. I hope to continue serving, uh, for the town of Silt. I think there is, um, strong need, uh, for us to continue balancing, um, our beliefs, to continue balancing, um, ethics. Uh, that's a huge, um, discussion within the Colorado Municipal League, uh, league that connects, uh, the politicians from around town. And I feel that, uh, somehow with my life preparation, I have the ability to listen, but I also have the ability to help balance some of the strong emotions that does happen uh, within the discussions in these, uh, rooms. And I'm very direct, goal-driven and I like to get to the point of things. And I think in a position, uh, for the board, it's good to have, uh, someone that has developed that ability. Uh, because we want to assist all people of Silt, not just one particular, particular segment. And I think, um, I would like to continue serving so that I can continue, uh, bringing that energy and that balance.
Um, yes, I would also like to thank everybody for coming out, for hosting us here today. Um, and those that are, you know, taking that time to, to run as a candidate. Um, it's obviously great to see local democracy at work and working successfully here with, uh, you know, some great public discourse and respectable. Uh, I hope I've been able to convey how I believe my, uh, background, both professionally and personally can help enhance the town of Silt and guiding, uh, this town as we move forward to try and address some of the issues and challenges that, uh, we are faced with or that are on the horizon. Um, I do believe that, uh, I bring some fresh perspectives and energy, um, to addressing some of those challenges. And hopefully I've convinced you and thank you so much.
We are spoiled for choice this evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think all the candidates here are great. Um, I also thank the chamber and Ron and all of you for actively participating and showing up and asking great questions. Great answers from all the candidates. Um, in my opening statement, I talked about my vision for the town of Silt being distilled down to one word and that word is we. And I think my answers to the specific questions during this evening's forum have helped drill down on some of those aspects of how I feel about those issues and how they affect the royal we. Um, if you want to know more about what I think or where I stand on any of these issues, I urge you to reach out. I, I'm at the dog park frequently. My dog wished multiple times per day, but alas. Um, various other community engagements and forums. I try to go to the library when I can or a local restaurant coffee. Um, you can also reach out to the town staff and they can direct you to get in touch with me. If you have issues that affect you or impact you or that you just want to know more about, I'd love to find out how I can help you. That's what everybody here is doing this for. Anybody that thinks we're doing it to be rich and famous isn't paying attention. I did the math with my son who worked a part-time job in Snowmass Village this summer and he made more per hour than I did. Um, kidding aside, I think greatness is in the agency of others. And if you like the way the town's headed, I'd appreciate the opportunity to keep leading this community forward. Thank you.
Oh, when I first got into this role, I didn't, uh, campaign in an election. It was just an open seat. And I kind of felt like it was made for me. I was born and raised here. This is my community. I'm going to do everything I can to protect it and make it good. Um, I'm, I'm not super excited about participating in an election, but you know, it's, I'm, I'm still very excited to be here and I feel privileged to be here. Um, and I was, you know, gonna try and convince myself that I wouldn't care if I lost, but which it does, you know, it would make me very sad. But I also feel like what a really excellent group of candidates. So that makes me feel like we're in really good hands. I think if I am elect, re-elected, then yeah, I just, I have this community so deeply in my heart and I want to move forward with collaboration and make sure that um, that everyone's needs are met as best as we can and that it's always feels like a community to us. So, thank you everyone.
Well, um, first of all, thanks to the Colorado River Valley Chamber of Commerce and Erin and your, and everyone's participation. The, uh, citizen comments were, were terrific and good discussion. Um, thanks to all the candidates and your willingness to serve the community. This concludes our forum. Thank you and have a good evening.